Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. This is the town meeting for the town of Powell for 2018. As most of you know, the general procedure has been we vote on two articles at the beginning of this, and then we go through the other articles that will be voted on tomorrow at the firehouse. Is that seven to seven?
Yeah.
Seven to seven at the firehouse. We also have an opportunity for those of you who wish to address the assembled people to speak to after we go through the articles. One thing that we always ask is if you are not a member of the Powell community, you're not a resident here, if you would just state that fact when you want to make a comment. And the general procedure is that in order to speak, you would receive the approval of the people that are here to speak. Generally speaking, this is a meeting for the residents of Powell. Very good. So we'll go through a couple of these. Article one, to hear reports of town officials and take action thereon. We need a motion, please. Very good. Jim?
Sorry.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Very good. Number two, to see if the voters will authorize its treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent. Motion, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? The next group of articles will be voted on tomorrow. The first, Article three, the election of all officers required by law. Are there any comments on that? Now we'll move on. Shall the voters appropriate $989,295 for general expenses of the town, of which $620,879 is to be raised by taxes and $130,136.21 from prior year's undesignated surplus funds? Anybody like a question on that? Now there, on part of the literature that you receive, there's some notes on this. If anybody would like to talk about that, we certainly can do that later. We'll go through the articles first. Article five. Jim?
I'm just going out with my microphone. I'd like to just be right everyone. My name's Jim Poses.
Jim, would you mind going right up to the microphone so people can hear you?
I would hope that other people would kind of ask a few more questions about these items, but since they rely on me, I have to stand up here and ask you if it is correct that our general tax rate will be going up in an estimate 28%. Using the 28%, and that is only because it is blended by the ballot articles that are basically the same one from one year to the next, that the regular general spending is going up approximately 49%. So that blended comes to the 28%. And I'm just a little confused on where we're supposed to be coming up with this extra monies from our pockets to take care of this, but at the same time, where are all the expenses occurring that are causing this increase? Two items that I've noticed, one being the lawyer's fee that is increasing dramatically each year, and we're putting another $45,000 in this year and another $45,000 next year. There's got to be a little explanation of what all these expenses are for, just to kind of give us an idea of what we're paying our taxes for. I think there was other items that I had mentioned, items in the report, so I don't take up more time, is maybe a little better understanding of what the timber fund is for. It kind of just sits there and continues on and continues on. I was wondering if that's earmarked for any special item. The other items up there are being used back and forth. And then there's a section on special funds. I noticed there's a new one, talent surf revenues, which now has like $74,000 into it, I mean $7,400 into it. And I was just curious now, what are these special funds for and how they're going to be utilized? Thank you.
Very good. Nelson, who wants to address those questions?
I can address some.
Here, let me give you this.
What happened with our, I'll talk about the general fund first. What Jim's referring to is the tax difference in the years, and basically the tax difference this year in the general fund is $156,483. And that's when you look at what we'd have to raise by taxes. The actual budget itself only went up by $98,795. And the reason for the increases was that the undesigned funds that we rolled over last year were not as large as they were the previous years. In fact, they were $75,000 less. The other thing is we added $50,000 for a town administrator, and then there's some smaller things that was to do, added 4K to the reappraisal fund, 13K to the building maintenance, 4K more for office maintenance, and 6K more for the transportation costs. And that's to do with the BCRC cost, not the cost of the actual facility. And 20K in the ballot article for the antenna. So when you look at that list, that's $172,000 that basically is in the budget, different than what there has been in the past, and really 120 of it is between the undesigned fund and the 50K. It's actually $125,000. The reason why there wasn't as much to roll over is simply that it was spent on other items during the year. And basically, let's see, undesigned, here, some of the things was due to legal, overspent, appraisal decisions, and the building repair to bring it up to meet code. There's other legal things that we had to do. We're trying to get a contract with the gravel. We're trying to solve some issues to do with various things within the legal funds. And one of them is, we've had several appraisal problems, and we're hoping to solve those and get done, and because of the way they're contractually agreed upon, the settlements, we can't discuss what they were or how they were. We're doing this land contract, which I think in the end will save the town money to do with a gravel purchase, because of what we're paying for gravel now and what we'll have to pay in the future if it works out well, but there's lawyers involved on both sides, and that's costing us some money. There's a possibility of a right of way issue we'll have to deal with, which can cost us some money. And then there's bids that we always do in contract stuff that we have to have each year with lawyers looking at and bear in mind that's correct. So legal fees, yes, they've gone up, but legal responsibility has changed from what it was originally years ago. There was a lot of handshakes and deals were made, and it was, nobody cared, and it worked fine. But nowadays, you can't do that. You really have to talk to lawyers, and you have to have lawyers involved. What else can I talk about? The administrative position, we had to put some funds in there for what it was. We put 50K in there. The question is, that I'm hearing is whether this will cover total costs, what are we looking at? We're going to do interviews of people, and actually, we're going to have a committee do the interviews of people, and then do a recommendation to the board, but we don't know if we'll end up with a part-time, full-time person based on what we find in the interview process. So what we did is we started out with enough money that we're hoping that we can find somebody that's part-time and give them some small benefits to make up the difference without paying a large salary. And again, it's really undesigned funds and the cost that has taken us to where we are today with the general one.
How many more on our website, Jim Nelson?
Yeah, we also have a website that people wanted, and we're paying fees for that. But again, what you're doing is you're adding up a lot of small things, which add up to the large amount, which we, like I said, was $172,000. But 120 of that, really, the two things to focus on is that we did not have as much undesigned funds to roll over, and we did not, and we didn't have a town administrator before, and we didn't have the $20,000 for the antenna, all of which I think are necessary to have, to be needed.
Road. We'll move on to the road. Are there any other questions concerning the town's anticipated budget? Jim, are you comfortable with that, or can we move on? Before I read Article five, I'd just like to express my thanks as a resident of a dirt road for the exceptional good job that the road crew has done. This hasn't been an easy, an easy time at all, and our roads have been icy, and within, oh, I don't know, an hour or so after we get up, the roads are in good shape. So thank you. We all thank you. Article five, shall the voters appropriate $956,600 for the maintenance and instruction of highways of the town, of which $812,258.57 shall be raised by taxes and $8,391.43 from prior year's undesigned surplus funds? Anybody like to comment on that?
Well, I just want to confirm my numbers, because as someone told me, looking at the annual report, it's kind of like a landmine that they're trying to understand. But can you confirm that the tax rate for the road will go up in estimated 36% from last year's rate? Yes, I understand about the fund balance, the designated and undesigned, and one thing that happened this year was we received, we had $142,000 worth of undesigned funds, which caused, would have caused a decrease in taxes because it would have to get applied to the budget. Unfortunately, the budget went up by almost the same amount, so there was nothing really that was given back to the taxpayers. Granted, I would understand that if you do have a lot to give back, you might compromise with the taxpayers and say, okay, let's increase the funds that we have so that we have the monies that are available for the future. And it's the taxpayers' monies. Well, of the $142,000, $67,000 went into that, all of those different funds. So that left a huge amount, maybe another $70,000 of what happened for that. And what had happened was we increased our sand budget, $40,000, increased our culvert, other spending on culverts, $9,000, increased salts, $10,000, increased rental, $20,000, and then we have the building maintenance on the road for another $11,000. So if you add up increasing all of the funds and all of these line items, you come up with $139,000, close enough for me for that. So that's why you see a tax rate no change, all right? So I understand that. The problem I have is come this next year that you're budgeting, not only are we losing the undesigned fund that you used up last year to increase the budget, increase the funds, but you're adding another $81,000 onto the budget. So in a sense, we're not getting anything back, but a huge increase in our budget and a higher tax rate. And I've had a discussion with Ellen, and we're on the same page. We're also at the point of respectfully accepting each other's opinions on a lot of these things. My one opinion would have been to increase the budget, like I said, for those funds that, like you did, but then this year, they have to go back down because it has to somehow give us a lower tax rate than increasing us up to 38, 36%. If it was in 18%, I'd be happy. I mean, you got the road in the general, aren't those big numbers? But for some people that don't get income sensitive, like the school, they have to pay what the extra has to be, they can afford this. Thank you.
The first thing is undesigned funds this year was only $16,000 and something, not $143,000. That was the previous year. So all we had was $16,000 and something to work with this year's undesigned funds. So you didn't have a whole lot to roll over. And basically, if you looked at it, I agree, tax difference was $218,394 that we're asking more to be raised. But if you really look at the overall budget difference from the previous year, it's only $83,200 that we actually increased the budget. The problem was we didn't have the money to roll over. And the reason for that is, is that the road crew did what they were supposed to do, and if you look at the year before, we were going through a transition of road formations. This year, we actually had blacktopped a lot more, we had done a lot more maintenance on the side roads, there's been a lot of work done on the roads. As you heard earlier, somebody said that they wanted to thank them. Well, that costs money, and that's why you don't have as much setting in the undesigned funds this year. And if you want to continue to have the roads improved, that's the one thing I think that all taxpayers out there actually get and receive out of this is the roads. If we didn't take care of the roads, you know, everybody doesn't have kids in school, but they certainly do live on the roads. So that's where I am with that. Again, the actual increase was only $83,200. Undesigned funds was $135,224 less this year than it was in the previous years. We had more wages, we put on an extra worker, which again, showed what you had in the way of road care. Our workman comp went up. Sand and gravel, we've been buying it by the truckloads from elsewhere, by actually by the ton, yards, I guess is the proper term. And we're hoping to lower that cost by coming up with an agreement with the property owner that would help us not have to continually buy three or four times a year at $30,000 a year. Our goal is to save money on that. Spent $6,000 on equipment rental, small amounts throughout the years. Of course, we've got a tandem truck we bought that we're making payments on every year, and people have seen that out there. It basically allows us haul larger loads of dirt when we're grading and so forth. It works to our advantage without burning up as much fuel. We're actually hoping to do that again, because we have a truck now, it's also in need of replacement. So we're hoping to rebuild the fleet. And that's where I am.
Yes. Would you mind coming up to the microphone and introducing yourself, please?
My name is Karen Galice. What exactly are you renting?
We were renting a, we were actually renting a ditch, ditch hole, an excavator that could go along and do the ditches faster and better. And we were looking at the option of actually lease purchase to that rental, and that's what we're hoping to do if it worked out well, and we find out that it is working out well, and we're trying to work out an agreement where we can actually end up owning this ditch, because it's on rubber wheel, it'll move through town better, it'll get more ditches done. So the water problems, you see, when we have heavy rains and washouts, that road won't get soaked in it.
Are there any other questions or concerns? I'm going to wait until we get to Article 26, and we can discuss it then. There are some things that would pertain to the roads during that article. Article six, shall the voters appropriate $11,000 towards support of the Bennington area visiting nurse association and hospital? Anybody like to comment on that? I encourage those people that are connected to those organizations or who would like to speak in their favor to introduce themselves and say whatever they feel comfortable saying about these different organizations that are on the ballot. Article seven, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of the Bennington County Conservation District? Article eight, shall the voters appropriate $500 towards support of the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse, a non-profit agency? Nine. Excuse me?
I'm from...
Good. Come on up and introduce yourself. I'm sorry to miss you.
That's okay. So my name is Jenna Casland, and I'm from the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. We're also known as the Child Advocacy Center. We provide support and resources for families and children who have been impacted by sexual abuse, egregious cases of physical abuse and neglect. In addition to providing support and resources for them throughout the investigation and judicial process, we also do abuse prevention programming. So we have trained all of the educators at Powell Elementary in recognizing the signs and symptoms of sexual abuse in children. With the exception of the new hires for this year, they're scheduled to be trained by our office this year. And we also do age-appropriate education with children to give them the skills that they need to hopefully not have to suffer any sort of abuse. So I actually myself just finished teaching at Head Start Powell last week, was my last of the six weeks, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Article nine, shall the town of Powell vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of the Bennington Free Clinic? Article 10, shall the voters appropriate $2,000 towards the support of Bennington Project Independence? 11, shall the town of Powell vote to appropriate the sum of $1,800 to support the programs and services of BRO-C Community Action in southwestern Vermont for lower-income persons? 12, shall the voters appropriate $600 to support services rendered to the town by the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Center? 13, shall the voters appropriate $200 for the support of Vermont Reena? 14, shall the voters appropriate $5,000 towards the support of the Oak Hill Children's Center? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Karen Galice, and I'm the director of the Oak Hill Children's Center in Powell. We are a five-star center, which means we have the top rating for a child center in the state of Vermont. We serve as children from the ages of six weeks to 12 years. I want to thank the citizens of Powell for being so supportive of our program. We were able to give 25, more than 25 scholarships this year to Powell families and to add to our operating budget. And again, thank you.
I have a question for you. How many students or members of, do you have?
We have 57 children who attend, and then in the summer, because we have a meeting in the million that was filled by the high school, we're able to take 15 schoolagers.
So you have 50 plus kids?
Yes.
That's great. Thank you. 15, shall the voters appropriate $60,000 towards the operation and maintenance of the Powell Fire Department Protective Association, Inc.? Yes? Jim?
My name is Jamie Omo. I'm the president of the Powell Fire Protective Association. I'd like to take this time to support, or thank everybody for the continued support and ask for the funding again to keep our operations up and going. We're meet every Monday night, so if anybody's looking to volunteer, we're always looking for new members. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Article 16, shall the voters appropriate $50,000 for the Powell Rescue Squad for its maintenance, ambulance replacement, insurance, operation, and operation?
My name is Mark Attlet. I'm the president of the Powell Rescue Squad, and I just want to say thank you.
Can you talk a little bit closer to the microphone, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your continuing support. And if anybody would like to become a member, we're always looking for new people, just stop down and see us. And again, thank you for your support.
Could you ask a question? Yeah. Nelson?
Can you tell me how much is in the fund now? I know she asked for $50,000. I know you've been doing it for, and I know these things cost a huge sum of money.
I don't know the exact number, but I'm off the top of my head.
I'm just wondering how kosher you need to get it on.
We are. We're actually, probably this year, we'll be replacing one of the ambulances. This year, we're close to it.
A little closer, please.
This year, we will be working on replacing one of our ambulances this year. So...
Thank you. Thank you. We all appreciate your service. Shall the voters appropriate for the operation and maintenance of the Powell Valley Fire Department consisting of the East Powell Fire Company, Powell Center Company, and the North Powell Fire Company, the sum of $52,000?
My name is Bob Mapp, and I'm the president of the Powell Valley Fire Department. I want to thank everybody for your support in the past, hopefully continue getting your support in the future. And any Monday night, we are usually in any of the fire stations for anyone that is interested in joining. Thank you.
Article 18, shall the voters appropriate $19,500 towards the Powell Valley Fire Department Fire Truck and Equipment Fund? 19, shall the town of Powell vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of the Powell Youth Baseball?
Hi, everybody. I'm Crystal Gardner. I'm the treasurer of the county's baseball. As everyone, I hope, has driven by 346 and has seen what we've been able to do for the children. Last year, we had 79 youths from four years to 12 years old. We, in the last few years, have put up a new fence, new batting cages, purchased new helmets, a lot of new equipment. This year, the whole national baseball throughout the whole country has made us buy new bats that are safer for the children, so that's going to be a really big burden on the entire league. So if anybody ever wants to come down and help us out, we like to see people in the community, help volunteer, hang out in the concession stand, support the kids. It's a really fun time, so if you see the kids down, stop in and check it out. They have a great time.
Thank you. Article 20, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of services rendered to the town by Project Against Violent Encounters? 21, shall the voters appropriate $15,000 for the operation and maintenance of the Solomon Wright Library?
Good evening. My name is Willie Jones. I'm a member of the board of the Solomon Wright Free Library, and I want to thank everyone for voting, for making sure that we have the money that we need for the care and operation of the library. You need to remember, the library is not just a place that's a receptacle for books. There is so much going on at the library, and you could be a very important part of that. And one thing that I think everybody needs to know here is that for the past 30 years, Linda Hall has been the executive director for the library. She works for a very small amount of money, and I hope that people will take the opportunity, if they see her or are there in the library, to thank her for her 30 years of service to Powell. Thank you.
I'd also like to mention that the library, for those of us who have very, very poor internet service, is a godsend, because the only way that we can do any downstreaming or load things is to go to the library, because so many of us have such poor service. Article 22, shall the voters appropriate $1,200 for the support... Article 22, shall the voters appropriate $1,200 for the support of services rendered to the town by the Southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging? 23, shall the voters appropriate $5,000 towards the support of Sunrise Family Resource Center, a nonprofit agency? Yes?
Hello. My name is Lindsay Ericato. I'm the Executive Director of Sunrise Family Resource Center. And we are very appreciative of the generosity the town of Powell has been providing to our organization for some, many years. And most recently, we have observed some increased trends of programs that children and families in Powell are receiving, specifically intensive home-based services, parenting programs at home. We offer all of our resource referrals for all childcare in Bennington County, as well as historically providing training for licensed home care providers. We offer a variety of different services that include career counseling and critical resources to some of our most vulnerable neighbors throughout the county. And upwards of 200 families in your community are, we're grateful to work with. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Article 24, shall the voters appropriate $2,500 towards the support of the program and service provided to the town by the Titorial Center? Article 25, shall, shall the voters appropriate $440,000 for the support of the disabled Vermonters by the Vermont Center for Independent Living? What did I say? $440? All right. Article 26, shall the voters, the town of Powell, vote to establish a road capital project fund and allocate $8,000 for road undesignated surplus funds to this fund? Anybody want to talk to that? Everybody understand it? Everybody understand it? You want me to explain it?
Explain.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. The state of Vermont has passed a number of regulations to do with water runoff and other things, which are going to have grants, which you have to have next and funds for these grants over the next couple of years. And what we're trying to do is create a fund that when the time comes, that we can apply for the grants and have the funds to support those projects. And that's really what this funding is for. And the $8,000 is the other $8,000 that was left basically in the undesignated funds. If you notice, we only moved over $8,000 or something. So we were looking at $8,000 being placed into this fund to start it off. We know that these things are going to start kicking off real soon with the state and we want to be prepared to get, get as much as we can to leverage as much dollars as we can from the state for the town. That's really what the goal is.
Thank you. Article 27, shall the voters of the town of Powell vote to appropriate the amount of $20,000 for fire department repeater system, which will enhance response time? Yes, come on up. Just give your name, please.
Craig Odell. I'm the Emergency Management Director for the town of Powell. I'm also a member of the Powell Fire Department.
My name is Josephine Gueblek, we're in the Powell Valley Fire Department.
So the reason we're asking for this money is basically we're having communication failure. In 2010, the FCC, the Federal Communication Commission, decided to go with narrowband fall emergency services. It was mandated, we had to do it in order to make sufficient room for cell phone usage in the airwaves. Since then, our communication has decreased. We're unable to talk officially to each other and a lot of our firefighters are unable to receive dispatch tones in the event of an emergency. We sought several grants, federal and state-level grants, to hopefully get a repeater system. Unfortunately, there's none out there for a fixed repeater, so that's why we resorted to coming to the town for the funding.
We have been working off a thing called the People Finder, which was used in the hospital to page their doctors, and that's on borrowed time. And these are the repeaters we use. They only reach out so far with the People Finder. When it's gone, it's gone. And he talked about the narrowbanding. We work out the 25-megahertz system and the government cuts it in half to 1250, so it's limited, our distance we could go. And that's the biggest problem. So with the repeater and the tower, we're going to be able to reach out farther and get down into Powell City and everything, because it really hurts our response time, critically bad when the tone goes in. A lot of people don't even get it. And we tried putting the system on our cell phones, but as you all know, living in Powell, cell phones are now working on. So sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. But this is really crucial for the infrastructure of the town to get the repeater system up and running.
We've got a few questions for you, I think, so why don't you stay right out there and hopefully...
No, unfortunately, FEMA. We've worked on both federal and state level, looking for grants. There's numerous grants out there, but nothing that will support a fixed repeater system.
The one-time call, is there?
Yes, this is a one-time call to the repeater. It would be put up at Powell Center Station because of the big generator there, and that way it's on a high point. It would test with numerous sites with portals and everything, and everybody seems to be able to reach back to Powell Center. And then, then we'd reach out to 101 Base and everything. So we'd have communications throughout Powell. But nothing's foolproof. You know, there's always going to be a glitch somewhere, but this is going to help us out a hundred percent. Yes, Crystal?
Have you reached out to see if they can put the repeater on how, what a windmill is, or if you're going to hire at a farm?
It opens up a whole other ballgame because of the repeater that that tower was in ours.
Right, where they can add repeaters to it. So they can approach, they can add repeaters to that tower if needed.
We, we did look into the repeater tower that's on the Tower Road, up Carter Hill Road, and there's a monthly fee to have a repeater put on that tower. Quite expensive, actually, to have a repeater put on that.
And by doing it on our own site, it's a one-time fee and had it localized right there, because of the base station and center station, and it counts off the base station, the Powell station. And with well as communication, doing testing, and putting up the rescue squad on, they recommended that's where it should go.
How tall is the tower going to be? You said tower.
Yes, it's just like a 30-foot tower. It isn't very tall.
Then the antenna would be on top of that.
And it goes like on top of the firehouse?
No, it would be sitting beside the firehouse. Right next to it. There's only so much height we could go for the FCC, so we only can go as high as they'll let us go without getting permits and everything else. It's all regulated very highly.
Anybody else? Nelson, did you want to add anything?
I think, I think you covered it. What I was thinking of was the cell phone coverage, surround and so forth. Just so people know where I'm coming from. I've been an amateur radio operator for probably 40 years or more, and I'm used to repeaters and towers and all the other things that go on. This could be a very big value to the town, just like when the Rescue Squad put up their repeater. It makes a big difference a few minutes when you have to get to a fire, just like you do if you have to get somebody rescued. I think it's a very well-spent item. I know we talked about it when it came to the board and I actually said, "Let's run an article and get the whole thing in one year and let's get this thing built." I think it's short-sighted is to not put something up that you know will deliver the service that you want.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Article 28, shall the voters authorize the Select Board to appoint a Town Clerk as provided in 17 VSA 2651E? Would you like to comment on that? Yes?
I'm Rosemary Pelletier, and I, I want to comment on the fact that we're voting on two things and they're not mutually exclusive. We are voting on a Town Clerk and we're voting to change how that Town Clerk becomes a Town Clerk from this point on. So I'm, it's a little confusing, so I'm going to read what I've written. I want to address first the Town Clerk. While on the Powell Planning Commission, I worked with Julie Weber in her job as Recording Clerk for our meetings. She is honest, hardworking, and willing to learn. As the Select Board has publicly stated, she served as Assistant Town Clerk and when circumstances required, she became the Acting Town Clerk. I think she would be the first to admit that she entered the job without the full set of skills needed. However, she has demonstrated a desire to acquire the needed skills and has taken Vermont State offered training courses and worked with other Town Clerks to improve her skills and has earned the right to prove herself qualified for the position if it becomes an appointed position. So to make a decision on Article 28 has nothing to do with the person who's in that position right now. It's whether appointing them is better for the town in the long run than having them voted. Regarding Article 28, the primary reasons presented by those who oppose the article seems to be the need for accountability and a system of checks and balances. They contend that the clerk has been and should be accountable to the citizens and not the Select Board, and that the independence of the Town Clerk provides checks and balance on the Select Board. I strongly agree with the need for accountability and checks and balances. The problem is that the current system of an elected Town Clerk provides neither. The position of Town Clerk, as the name suggests, is primarily a very important clerical position with additional responsibilities for elections, et cetera. Actually, there is very little accountability with an elected Town Clerk because the job of the clerk is mostly done in private and unobserved outside of the office itself. The town office is the repository of many legally binding documents. Therefore, it is critical that vital records are kept accurately, filed and dated in a correct and timely manner and are easily accessible. These documents deal with our homes, titles to our property, the legality of our marital statuses, evidence in settling disputes, documentation of fair elections, et cetera. However, as citizens, we have no way of monitoring the performance of the clerk, except as it relates to our own individual interactions. The citizens do not monitor the accounts, nor do they do a job performance review. Under the current system, the Town Clerk is independent, sets his or her own hours, is sole monitor of the unaudited accounts, and does not report to any one particular person. There is no oversight. In the event that a Town Clerk is not meeting his or her responsibilities, whatever the reason, it will be undetected indefinitely and once discovered, unless there is criminal wrongdoing, there is little recourse to correct the situation until the next election, which could be more than two years later. A lot can happen in that time. As was recently noted in the Bennington Banner article, there is currently a backlog of unprocessed documents. As citizens, we are unaware of the extent of this backlog. The ramifications of this could be far reaching with costly implications for the town. Though the Select Board was aware, there was little they could do since an elected Town Clerk is only responsible to the citizens at large. The same lack of accountability does not apply to the Select Board because their business does not happen in private. The open meeting laws and the fact that public meetings are televised and made available for later review gives the citizens a way of knowing what has happened and thus being able to hold these elected officials accountable. If you want accountability, then you need an appointed Town Clerk. Then the Town Clerk is accountable to the Select Board, who are accountable to the citizens. As for checks and balances, none currently exist between the Select Board and the clerk. Each function's independent of the other. Having an appointed Town Clerk is good for the town and it's also good for the clerk. Otherwise, why would some Town Clerks have requested to become appointed rather than elected? Let's start with why it's good for the clerk. Currently, the Town Clerk receives a stipend and a percent of fees collected. As an appointed employee, he or she would receive a salary and benefits package and a consistent income. Currently, the accounts of the Town Clerk are not audited, leaving the clerk vulnerable to claims of misuse of funds. Anyone in a public position of accepting cash payments should welcome the opportunity for oversight and auditing, thus having proof of their honesty. As an employee, there is oversight and performance reviews so that if things do go wrong, they can be addressed immediately and the responsibility for correcting them is shared between employer and employee. An appointed clerk is good for the town. Since anyone can run for office if they get the required signatures, the Board has no control over the qualifications of the Town Clerk. As an appointed position, the Select Board posts the qualities needed and interview candidates, especially at this time, when past issues are just beginning to surface, it is even more important to have a highly qualified Town Clerk. I'm a little disappointed that those who work in our town office have chosen to be publicly silent on this issue, leaving the voters uninformed that we are asked, when we're asked to make this decision. I don't think most of us have any idea of what the current backlog is. To the Select Board, I encourage you to publicly affirm your intent to hire Julie Weber for the position of Town Clerk after the 45-day period provided in the Vermont statutes. I think with this assurance, more citizens would be willing to consider voting yes on Article 28. During this 45-day period, I suspect that we will all have a better sense of the scope of the backlog and the time and the additional skills needed to trace back and find records that have not been filed or have not been filed properly, or to take documents that have not been notarized or are incomplete and to try to rectify them. It is a much easier job if you are only responsible for doing it right the first time. It is far more demanding to investigate, uncover, and correct errors. By the end of the 45 days, Julie will be in a better position to decide if she is still willing to take on this monumental task. Finally, from what I'm hearing, we're only seeing the tip of the iceberg and the full extent of the issues are not yet known. For this reason, I would encourage anyone who has purchased property in the past several years to check and make sure the discharges of their former mortgages were filed and that there are no standing liens on their homes. Those whose marital status has changed may also want to check that their documents are important. I suggest that you think about these things when you cast your vote about on Article 28. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very thoughtful presentation. I'm sure we all learned something. All right. Are there any other? Yes?
Well, obviously, I don't have any prepared remarks, but on Article 28, I just want to ask the question of why, if it's about accountability, there's other ways to hold a Town Clerk accountable rather than have them assigned by the Select Board. They can be audited. We could put it into the audit rather than just appointed by an elected body. That would seem to me to be a conflict of interest. Just my opinion.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment on this issue? If not, I know that there are a couple of other people who spoke to me earlier about wanting to address the committee here. There was a lady. Yes?
This is non-artikel.
That's, it's non-artikel. We're through the articles.
Thanks. I've been asked by the Second Chance Animal Shelter to read a statement regarding their new facilities in Shasby. And there are just a few points. One is, they want to remind us of their mission. The Second Chance Animal Center is dedicated to providing compassionate shelter and adoption services for the animals in their care, improving... adoption services for the animals in their care, improving the lives of companion animals and the communities that we serve via spay and neuter assistance, humane education, advocacy and humane investigative advice, and assistance to law enforcement agencies. And a little bit about their history. In January 1961, the board negotiated the purchase of a building on Route 7A in Shasbury, which was previously used as a restaurant. And what started as a two-room shelter has expanded over the years to a facility that accommodated 14 dogs and 100 cats. And so they built this new facility and they want us to know a little bit about that. The transition to our new facility will not only allow us proper spaces designed to improve even better care to the animals and humans we serve, but this will also result in new programs and opportunities that will enable us to better serve our communities. These things are part of our work at Second Chance and our dedication to our mission. And they want also to remind us of a number of their services. Trap and crate rental, have a heart traps that you can rent if you are in need, and a program called SNAP, which is Spay and Neuter Assistance Program. And there are other educational and outreach programs that you can learn about if you go to their website at secondchanceanimals.org. And the last point they wanted me to share is that they have never received state, county, or town funding and provide all of their services and programs to the community as a private nonprofit organization. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals who would like to address this? Yes. Can we bring it down for you?
Joyce Held. I have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate now or not.
Yes, it is appropriate.
The new town office. If I remember correctly, there was a sinking fund of some sort for the new town office. How much money do we have in that fund? I couldn't find it in the book. I'm sorry. Could you tell me the page?
Page 22. Jim says... 166,000 something. Thank you. Do you have any other comment on that or just curious as to the amount that's there?
Well, I guess I do have another question.
Why don't you get up here so everybody can hear you, please? Thank you.
Are we continuing to add to that? I know we did it and then we, you know, so is that something that we add every year?
I mean, call quickly. I think we put 20,000 this year. We'll continue.
20,000 a year?
That's all we put in a year.
For 2018.
Yeah. If you pass it, the budget, yes.
Right. I see.
Thank you. I know we had a comment from the transfer station. Did you want to say something?
I just have a few things to say. I'm Tom Schuhr, the supervisor for the transfer station. We have a couple of events coming up. We have the Green Up Day, which will be the first Saturday, which is the 5th of May. And then the following Saturday is a Household Heritage Waste Day, and that will be in Bennington. These things are important. You know, we need to get rid of some of the things. But what we're going to do a little differently for the Green Up Day is we're going to be, I'm going to be setting up a thing at the pavilion at the Legion. I want to have coffee, some treats, some snacks, and hot dogs and things like this. We encourage everybody to attend. I'll be passing out bags there. Of course, we'll take everything up to the transfer station for that. But looking forward to getting some more participation if we can, get some things. Another thing is when people pick up stuff along the road like they did the other day, they brought something, and we can tell, picked up along the road, trust me. We do take that, you know, no charge. And I know Dave Lowen, Dave's here, and Megan and so forth. Megan's here. They do this year-round, and we're always willing to help people that want to clean up the town. It's part of what we do. And then the other thing I really wanted to mention this year, July 1st, when the new year starts, we will be accepting fluorescent bulbs, mercury thermostats, anything containing mercury. We will be accepting those. It's a state-funded program. It's no cost to us. It's just my labor, box it up, ship it to that, same as we do with everybody's household batteries. It's the same type of thing. So I just want to let you know those things are coming up, and I hope to see you Green Up Day and bring your stuff up to Bennington for the Household Heritage Waste Day. We'll get rid of the stuff now. Thank you very much.
Talking about food scraps?
Oh, you know, food scraps have been going on for a year, and we're getting, it's been going on since last July 1st, and we are getting more and more and more people involved with that, which is great. Unfortunately, we're reducing the trash. We're not making as much money, but it's still, we're keeping this stuff out of the landfills. Trevor, Mance takes it, they take it up to Bennington, and they're making compost out of it. So it's being recycled, it's being reused the way it should be. So these programs are important. I mean, it's really something that we can do in this town to help clean things up. And I'm very, very proud to be part of it now. I mean, it's, you know, when I looked at Act 148, when I first, you know, started, it was pretty daunting, but things are working and people are slowly coming around us. It's going to be a wonderful thing. If we can get everything working, get everybody working together, it's going to be great. Thank you very much.
The reason why I asked him to talk about food scraps, I don't know how many of you people have compost in your backyard, but I used to until I had too many visits from the bears. So I think it's a perfect thing to move this over to where the transfer station will move it out, but it's a good thing to do is to separate that from your other trash. Yes, come on up.
Certainly not on the agenda, but...
If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, I know who you are, but...
I'm Dave Lowen, Pownell resident. And last week at the meet and greet session for candidates for select board and other positions, we had the chance to acknowledge and thank these people for their service as well as those who are putting themselves forward to serve us again with their courage and commitment. But I wouldn't want to miss the chance, and I suspect it's true of a lot of you, at this most unique of Vermont institutions, town meeting, to express the gratitude to so many people in this town who volunteer. They're not in any elected positions. They volunteer because they care about Pownell and they make such a difference. For those of you who are on various boards and commissions, to coaches, to the library, to the elementary school, senior citizens, and obviously particularly to the fire department and the rescue squad, all of us in Pownell are grateful to you, and we are a better town for your efforts. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Yes, those ready.
In my comments, I said that I wish that the select board would be clear about their intent if you're going to. If Article 28 passed, does this board support having Julie as the person who is hired? And I don't know if it's appropriate to put you on as part of that.
No, I don't think so.
But I think that, I think the citizens have to have a sense of where that stands.
This is not a campaign organization right now, and it is the responsibility of the selectmen to make a reasonable choice if the ballot passes. And I'm sure that they will, but I just, I don't feel this is the appropriate...
I take it back.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any others before we ask Representative Fennell of the state government, Bill Batson, to speak? Anybody else like to say anything? Bill?
It's a real pleasure to be here. And just a few things. First thing I want to say is that I think probably some of you watched the Oscars last night. Remember they had an award for who spoke the shortest amount of time? I don't really need a jet ski, but maybe I'll try. Okay. Actually, where I want to start out is that I look around the audience and there's a gentleman who's always been here, who isn't here tonight, who's served this town forever, and that's Charlie Palmer and Priscilla. And I just, he is one of my predecessors. He's a very good man, and this year he stepped down from all of his remaining town activities, I understand. And so I just wanted, in the minutes that we recognize, what a true gentleman and a great contributor to this town he and his family have always been. As I said, I will try not to go too much because I have a lot of information over here for you. One is, as always, there is a Built Oil Poll, and I hope you fill it out. I'd like to get good numbers. Today I challenged Woodford, who sends their greetings, to see if they could have a higher percentage of responders than Pownell, so game on. Also, I have my usual town meeting legislative report, which has a lot of information. And what I do is I have a lot of colleagues who write very short pieces, and I edit it and, you know, put it together for you and, you know, add my thoughts. I will also, I think a great number of you get my emails, so I will also send it out that way. But I have hard copies over here, and I'll also have them tomorrow at the polls. Picture's a little dark, but that's what happens when you have to send things, you know, through the internet. You don't always get to control everything. I also have over here two other pieces of information that'll help you. Tonight, we really are talking, of course, about our statewide education tax, our local statewide funding, and also this now, under H911, a House Ways and Means proposal will connect to the personal income tax. This is a proposal that came out of the House. It's sent, many of you have kept you up as it's evolved. The proposal ended up being a bit different, but there will be a shift in it to accounting for more income than we currently do. And now we do currently account for income under consent sensitivity, et cetera. It's not an easy thing to fix. Whatever the House has proposed, I'm sure will change as the Senate engages and the governor engages. Why is it difficult? Is that you want to be, the proposal's generally revenue neutral, though there are cost controls, I believe in it, because it requires, doesn't require, really helps voters understand the effect of their vote to a higher degree than before. Is we have individuals in this town who have decent incomes, who live, you know, so modestly that if you put it all on the income, they'll be hurt. You have other individuals in this town who have very modest incomes but have large amounts of taxable property. If you go too far that way, it'll be difficult on them. I think everybody is living in the spirit of not trying, of trying to be fair and also trying to make it understandable and more transparent going forward. We'll see how that proposal goes. Under that proposal, I can tell you is that there is a list comparative for towns, and this is the estimated FY19 education tax rates on homestead property and household income. I haven't studied it in the tremendous depth, but I can tell you that just about every town, I believe, goes down that Pownell, under estimated FY19 equalized homestead property tax rates, current law's $1.49. Under this particular law, it would be $1.32. And estimated FY19 tax rates on household income, under current law, is 2.47%. Under H911, it would be 2.19%. Those sound favorable, but things work out with many pieces. A lot of the changes are making sure that what would happen is all of the sales tax would now go to the education fund, where now it's just basically a portion, I think it's 30%, I presume, roughly there. And we would also not have the general fund transfer fight every year. There are complexities. The only other things I wanted to talk about, and I know I'm not going to win the jet ski anymore, is there are two bills that I've worked on a lot that I want you to be aware of because they're in my committee. And one of them has to do with protecting your personal information, which is bought and sold without your knowledge or your ability to affect that in any way. And we've passed a bill that asks those that do this, they're called data brokers, to register with the state and to let us know, if we look, then it's up to us, whether they credential the people they sell to, because some of those sales are really pretty bad. They're going after vulnerable populations and hurting them. Some of them are good. They may help you get a product that you wouldn't otherwise get. We also asked them to let us know if they're selling children's information, which we don't think is a good idea. We also asked them to let us know how to opt in or opt out of their sales, which we think is appropriate. This sets up a market. If they're a good company, you might stay with them. If they're not so good, you might say, no for me. We also, and this is important, is that, you know, there was a big, let's see, the credit rating agencies had a big loss last summer of personal information, and to get out of it, you had to pay money to freeze and unfreeze your credit report. That, under this bill, would be free. We don't think there should be a financial barrier to you being able to control your personal information to a degree. So that's a bill I'm hopeful of. It's controversial because data brokers don't like it, and of course, it'd make a difference for them. But I think it's good consumer protection, and the majority of the House does and would be hopeful in the Senate. The other one I want to talk about that I think is really important is, has to do with workforce development. And this is making sure that our kids, and we really should listen to the kids, have a greater chance for technical education. And to do so, we need to strengthen, and not only kids, but also adults, and also people returning to the workforce. And so we want to strengthen apprenticeships, internships. As I said, people returning to the workforce, new category that's around the country out for a certain, called returnships. But imagine a person who stayed home to take care of their family. The kids grew up, and now it's time for the returns to help them. It also would help our small businesses who don't have the resources to recruit at post-secondary education institutions and to help them actually do that, so we can keep and have more of our own working here in Vermont. There are other measures in it, too. I think what's most, the best part of this for me is that often in Montpelier, we find that different agencies and departments are all in silos, bunkers, if you will. And we have really brought together, with strong support from both parties, the Department of Labor, the Agency of Education, and the Agency of Commerce and Community Development to realize this is a real opportunity for us for economic development. And that bill passed my committee unanimously midweek last week, and we've worked on a lot of other bills, too, as has the House. So I think I'll stop there if anybody has any questions, either now or I will be here. And as always, it's really, it's great to come home mid-winter, to see everybody, even with the snow. And I really thank you for the tremendous amount of support you've offered me, you know, so often. I always look forward to hearing from you. If you don't hear back from me as soon as you'd like, please don't hesitate to ask again. I've found that sometimes I've found emails in my spam folder, and that drops out every once in a while. So, you know, nag me, I'll feel embarrassed, but it's your business that I'm sent there to do the best I can with. And with that, thank you very much. I hope to see everybody at the polls tomorrow and in any other way that works for you. So with great appreciation, all the best. So I think I'll stop there, if anybody has any questions, either now or I will be here. And as always, it's really, it's great to come home mid-winter, to see everybody, even with the snow. And I really thank you for the tremendous amount of support you've offered me, you know, so often. I always look forward to hearing from you. If you don't hear back from me as soon as you'd like, please don't hesitate to ask again. I found that sometimes I found emails in my spam folder, and that drops out every once in a while. So, you know, back me, I'll feel embarrassed, but it's your business that I'm sent there to do the best I can with. And with that, thank you very much. I hope to see everybody at the polls tomorrow, and any other way that works for you. So, with great appreciation, all the best.
If there now, or if there is no other business to bring before this group, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Move, give a second. Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much.